Well, Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Pernie.
Here.
Commissioner Vanier.
I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are getting feedback today. Our first item on today's agenda is a Citizens Forum, a time set aside for any citizens who would like to address the Commission on an item that is not on the day's official agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, we will continue on with awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, Resolution Number 076426, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Operations Event Worker Lloyd E. Harrison for his employment with the City of Salina from May 2001 to September 17, 2007.
I would entertain that motion. Well, I'd move that we adopt Resolution Number 076426, expressing gratitude to Lloyd E. Harrison.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution expressing gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Lloyd Harrison for his employment with the City of Salina. Will all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. How about if we do the next one, too?
Item 4.2, Resolution Number 076427, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Fire Engineer and EMT Ronald D. Musvelt for his employment with the City of Salina from August 1, 1976, to September 16, 2007.
Entertain a motion?
So move we adopt Resolution 076427.
Second. Motion is to approve Resolution 076427, expressing appreciation to Ronald Musvelt for his employment with the City of Salina. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero, and I believe we have plaques for these two gentlemen. This plaque is a resolution expressing gratitude and appreciation to Operations Event Worker Lloyd E. Harrison for his employment with the City of Salina from May 1, 2001, to September 17 of 2007. Whereas during the period from May 1, 2001, to September 17, 2007, Lloyd Harrison served as intermittent custodial worker and Operations Event Worker for the Bicentennial Center of the City of Salina. And whereas Lloyd Harrison has demonstrated invaluable and dedicated service to the City of Salina, and whereas such service and dedication to his job and the interests of the City of Salina are worthy of public recognition, so now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the City of Salina, Kansas, that an official expression of gratitude and appreciation to Lloyd Harrison for his dedicated and faithful service as intermittent custodial worker and Operations Event Worker for the Bicentennial Center of the City of Salina, and that the City Clerk is hereby directed to have this resolution delivered to Lloyd Harrison, which I would like to do so now. But before I do that, I want to give you an opportunity to say anything if you wish.
This has been a very rewarding experience working for the City of Salina, and I appreciate that very, very much.
Thank you. Resolution expressing gratitude and appreciation to Ron Musvelt for his employment with the City of Salina from August 1, 1976, to September 16 of 2007. Whereas during this affirmation period, Ron Musvelt served as firefighter, firefighter engineer, fire engineer EMT for the Fire Department of the City of Salina. And whereas Ronald Musvelt has demonstrated invaluable and dedicated service to the City of Salina, and whereas such service and dedication to his job and the interests of the City of Salina are worthy of public recognition, so now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Salina, Kansas, that an official expression of gratitude and appreciation to Ron Musvelt for his dedicated and faithful service as firefighter, firefighter engineer and EMT for the Fire Department be entered, and that the City Clerk be directed to have this resolution delivered to Ron Musvelt, signed again by the Board of Commissioners and the Mayor on the 10th day of September 2007. So I'd also like to give you an opportunity to say anything you wish.
I've really enjoyed helping the people of Salina and worked for the City of Salina and worked for the Fire Department. It's been a good, long career, and very rewarding, so thank you.
Item 4.3, the month of September 2007, as Salina Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in the City of Salina. Father Kerry Neimeyer, St. Mary's Church, will read the proclamation.
Looks like he sent plenty of people in his absence.
Father Kerry is in Ireland, so...
Yes, I suppose it's glaringly obvious I am not Father Kerry. My name is Kathy Allen, and I am the Program Director for Ashby House. And we...did you say no, don't introduce everybody, or do?
If you'd like to.
Okay. I'll just really quickly run down for you the folks that are with me.
You can take your time.
This is Pat Oakes. He works for Addiction and Prevention Services here. This is Melanie Elira. She came all the way from Topeka to be with us today. This is Toni Graham. She is one of my counselors at Ashby House. This is Dora Borer. She is with Breakthrough Incorporated here in Salina. And behind her is Jerry Norris, who is the founder of Breakthrough, which is a men's reintegration program here. And there you are. She's so much shorter than him. Right behind me is Sharon Norris, who I'm sure is the brains behind the Breakthrough outfit. And this is Les Spurling. He is the CEO of CKF. And this is Brian Anderson, who is my boss. He's the administrator of Ashby House. So here we are. Whereas the month of September 2007 will be declared as Salina Alcohol and Drug Addiction Month, whereas substance abuse disorders are as serious and treatable health problems, and as many as 63 percent of Americans say that addiction to alcohol or other drugs has had an impact on them at some point in their lives, whether it was an addiction of a friend, employee, employer, or family member, or another experience such as their own personal addiction. And whereas assessing our citizens' needs for addiction treatment and referring them to appropriate treatment and their family members to support services is a crucial first step in helping people realize that recovery is possible and treatment is effective. And whereas barriers to accessing treatment programs, such as the stigma attached to the disease, can help heal lives, families, and our community, are a significant problem for our friends, coworkers, and family members with substance abuse disorders. Whereas, community members seeking treatment deserve affordable, individualized treatment programs. And whereas, celebrating individuals in recovery and their families and saluting the healthcare providers who help them obtain treatment, educate our community about the benefits of treatment, and affirms that such providers deserve adequate compensation for their services. And whereas, to help achieve this goal, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration within the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the Social and Rehabilitation Services, Addiction and Prevention Services invite all residents of Kansas to participate in National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month.
Are there some specific activities for that dedication you want to bring to our attention?
Yes, and I...there's something exciting going on. We're having the Joy of Recovery Conference later this month in Salina, and I'm going to turn over the description of that to Melanie so she can tell you a little bit more about it.
Don't need the microphone, but it's going to be 19th, 20th, and 21st, which is next week, so we're all getting anxious. We're having comedian Mark Ledholm come Wednesday night. We're having a full day of sessions on Thursday with a Friends of Recovery barbecue and a sobriety powwow that night, open to the public, completely free. And Friday is another full day with the Andrew of Donovan Awards of Excellence wrapping up the conference for an awards luncheon. So that's our conference, and I think Les has something else going on.
On Friday, the 21st, at 6:00 PM at Jerry Ivy Park, we will have our annual Recovery barbecue, and that's also a fundraiser for the Salina Area United Way. So it'll be great food and fun at 6:00 PM on Friday.
Thank you to all of you. I do have a signed copy of the proclamation, which I'll give to you.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Item 4.4, the month of September 2007, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Salina. Sister Judy Stevens, Catholic Charities, will read their proclamation.
Good afternoon. It's an honor to be here and read this proclamation. Whereas, in 1968, Congress authorized President Lyndon Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Week, and this observance was expanded in 1988 to a month-long celebration to honor our nation's Hispanic heritage. During this month, America celebrates the traditions, ancestry, and unique experiences of those who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, the countries of Central and South America, and the Caribbean. Whereas, Hispanic Americans have enriched our nation through contributions in many professions and fields, including education, law, government, business, science, sports, and the arts. Whereas, we remember those who were instrumental in exploring and mapping our great hemisphere, and we honor those proud Hispanic-American patriots who fought and died for our country in every war and conflict since our founding. Whereas, during National Hispanic Heritage Month, I join with all Americans in celebrating this rich and diverse culture, and encourage all citizens to recognize the important role of Hispanics in creating and building this great community and nation. Now therefore, I, Alan Jelka, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2007, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. I call upon all the people of the City of Salina to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs.
Thank you very much, and you have a similar activity to share with us today?
We do. We have Gabriella's going to dance for us, but also on Sunday, we have National Hispanic Heritage Celebration in Oakdale Park from 2:30 to 6:30. Everyone is invited and welcome. We'll have mariachi music, a variety of music, some wonderful food. There will be various ethnic groups there. Everyone is invited, and I have flyers for everyone, and there'll be some extras.
Certainly an occasion to celebrate. I hope that'll be very well attended. You could send that young lady back up here a second. It's Gabriella. I have a couple of signed proclamations, and I'll give them to you. I don't know if she's speaking for herself or for a lot of other people. She says we need a water park. We'll enter that in a minute, sir. We have no public hearings and items scheduled for certain times, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 27, 2007. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 076434, authorizing a concession agreement with the Salina Soccer Club for the Salina Soccer Complex. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 076433, adopting the Smoky Hill Museum's Ethics and Collections Policies.
Any questions about individual items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion is to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero. We will now continue on with development business.
Item 7.1, Application Number Z07-10, requesting change in zoning district classification from C1 and A1 to PC5 in Plan C2, and approval of preliminary development plan on a 20-acre tract of land located on the west side of Ohio Street, north of Schilling Road. Subitem 7.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 0710413.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an application to rezone 20 acres, which is really 20 acres, the eastern 20 acres of a larger piece of property. The shaded area there is the 20 acres. The area to the west is the original Quail Meadows Estates addition. And just by way of background, there have been some initial challenges that have made this a challenging piece of property to develop. And part of that was the fact that, at one time, it was split in half from west to east and had two different owners, one local and one in California. And the...there was a need for...the south half owner needed access to the sewer, which lies at the north edge, and the north half owner needed access to the Schilling Road ditch, which is south of Schilling Road. And so we were able to knit those two owners together in terms of coming up with a single plan for developing this piece of property. Because of those two separate ownerships, we agreed back in 2004 to accept a plat for the west, 57 acres, with the understanding that there would be a follow-up to that with developing plans and a zoning pattern for the east 20 acres. Just by way of review, in that area that you see platted to the west there, there are 136 residential lots. Twelve of those over in the southwest corner are set aside for duplex or townhome development. And then there were two lots on Schilling Road that were set aside for office or possibly some form of multifamily residential development. That all received final approval in the spring of 2005, and you can see that the residential area out there is currently under development. At that time, the future land use plan was amended to show the frontage along Schilling and Ohio as future office commercial, to send a message that the Commission was open or receptive to commercial development there, but didn't want to go any farther than that without seeing some actual concept for how it would be developed. So the applicant has now come forward with a plan for laying out and developing the east 20 acres, and the applicant doesn't believe there's sufficient market demand to devote that full 20 acres strictly to office use, so they have requested rezoning of the south half on the corner to a Plan C5 designation, and the north portion, Plan C2, which is neighborhood shopping. That area, as you could see there, would be bisected by a public street here, which would be an extension of Joni Lane through there over to Ohio Street. This is not, at least in planning staff's view, a routine zoning case just from the standpoint that we are looking at land use compatibility when you have residential and commercial abutting each other. Also, the character of South Ohio, what it's going to be from Magnolia to Schilling, isn't really established yet, and so what gets decided in the way of zoning on the west side could influence the future land uses on the east side as well, and help define the character of South Ohio. And then there are cost implications that arise when you have commercial development in terms of traffic generation, in terms of possibly needing to do things with traffic sooner than you would otherwise. So that's why we feel this is not strictly a routine request for commercial zoning. There was initial public hearing on this request at August 7, at the Planning Commission meeting. There was a lot of discussion on what was occurring on the south side of Schilling Road, and a lot of focus on uses and building heights that might be allowed on the north side. On the south side, we do have C5 zoning, but there were many C5-type uses that were deleted from the list of permitted uses on that south side, and so that was part of the focus on the north side. We've reviewed for you the differences between C5 and C2. C2 is a much lower-scale development, a much shorter list of uses. There's a maximum building size of 25,000 square feet, and the types of uses that would go in there would not be the types of traffic generating uses that you could have in C5. If you look at the property itself, it has 1,332 feet of frontage on Ohio Street. At one time, it was shown to be in the mapped 100-year floodplain, but because of construction of the Schilling Road ditch and subsequent survey work, all the property on the north side has been amended out of the 100-year floodplain. I think if you're familiar with the area, the prevailing traffic pattern today is southbound on Ohio and then westbound on Schilling Road to access shopping and employment centers. And the applicant believes that that northwest corner is better suited for some sort of retail or service-type businesses than for office development, and that's the reason for the request for Plan C5. Also, the southwest corner on the Liberty property is also zoned Plan C5. The idea behind the Plan C2 was to have a step-down or a buffer zone in between the C5 and the existing residential to the north. And as a plan district, a site plan would have to be submitted and approved, and careful attention could be given to the types of buffers, lighting, other types of things where you have commercial-abutting residential property. Really, the question for you on the north piece is whether you think that's appropriate for some limited form of commercial development, or whether office or residential it should be limited to. There is no C3 zoning in the proximity, which is why you don't see that as part of the application. The southwest corner is Plan C5, and the C5 zoning here would be compatible with the Plan C5 zoning on the south, but the Planning Commission wanted to give attention to deleting some uses that they didn't think were appropriate for that corridor. And again, the Plan C2 is...the idea there is to step down both as to density and to height. John, I don't know if you have the layout of the intersection. This was the design plan for the Schilling and Ohio intersection. If you look to the right, this is the north leg of Ohio Street. At the intersection, it will be a five-lane section with a center turn lane for left turns and dedicated right lane and a through lane. Schilling has three lanes here, and it looks like a three-lane design on the south and extension of paving to the east. Of course, Schilling Road further to the east is a gravel road. According to the KDOT plans, this intersection has an average daily traffic of 10,000 vehicles a day. Most of that's north on Ohio and west on Schilling Road. If we look at the responsibilities that the applicant would have, two things the city has done is design and construct a 12-inch water line that extends from Magnolia Road down to...down Ohio to Schilling and then over to the railroad tracks. That's created a loop system and really allowed development to occur along Schilling Road, and also the city has taken responsibility for design and construction of Ohio Street, the widening there. The applicant, by previous agreement, would be responsible for, when building permits are issued, a cost-recovery charge to repay the cost of constructing Schilling Road, a cost-recovery charge to connect to the Ohio Street water line, and a fee to dump into the Schilling Road ditch. The concept there is that no detention or no area has to be set aside on the north side for detention. The detention is provided in the ditch, but the benefiting properties pay a fee for the right to drain into that. All of these things were addressed in an annexation agreement with the owner. The other thing the owner has agreed to do is dedicate to the city at no cost all the right-of-way for the widening of Ohio Street along that west side for 332 feet, and that would be a dedication of 50 feet, which would meet our right-of-way standard for arterial streets and allow that plan to be constructed. Again, in 2004, the plan was amended to show this as office commercial, so it does not support... support the applicant's plan for retail commercial, and it would necessitate an amendment of the plan. When the Planning Commission looked at this a second time on the 21st of August, they, at the close of their public hearing, made two recommendations. They did recommend that the area described there be amended, the future land use designation from office commercial to retail commercial. And then they recommended approval of Plan C2 zoning for this lot right here. And with the extra limitation that a building height in that area couldn't exceed 35 feet, they recommended approval of Plan C5 zoning for the south lot, with the permitted uses being all those listed in the staff report and on the attached ordinance. And with the further provision that building height, lot coverage and all in this would be equivalent to the C3 district, which is 35 feet instead of 50 feet and 40 percent instead of 50 percent lot coverage. The findings that they made was that it is an arterial street intersection, which is a desirable location for commercial development. Because of the improvements being made to Ohio Street and nearby C5 zoning to the south and west, the property is suitable for some form of commercial development. It is adjacent to existing C5 zoning on the south, and the Plan C2 would serve as a step-down or buffer zone that needed utilities and drainage improvements are in place, and that the comprehensive plan should be amended. So this comes to you with a recommendation attached. If you concur with that, the attached ordinance could be approved on first reading. If you do not agree with the recommendation, you could overturn the request and deny it with four votes, or you could send it back to the Planning Commission with direction, citing any areas of disagreement with the recommendation. There are a number of areas in the community where you do have C5 that butts up to residential. Where, location where that would occur would be right at this location. These lots here would be the only ones that would abut directly to a C5. And so extra attention would be given to buffers or screening in that location. But this is a C1 commercial lot, and then this would be C2 that would abut the residential. The other, in addition to getting the right-of-way straightened out for Ohio Street, the other reason the applicant was interested in doing this now is so that people who bought lots over here, which most of these are not sold yet, they would at least have the opportunity to know what's planned for this, where if it was left unzoned or agricultural, they'd really be not clear on what is planned. So the one other advantage of putting this in place now is that future lot buyers would be on notice as to what is planned for them to the east. I think with that, I'd be happy to address any questions. John, could you put that future land use map up? This is in your packet, but it just gives an overview of what the corridor is designated for on the current future land use plan. As you can see, most of the east side of Ohio today is designated for future residential With that, I'd be happy to address any questions about the commission's recommendation or
The kind of brown in the diagram signifies the commercial.
You're referring to this?
Yeah.
That refers to office commercial. This is Target here and Lowe's, and that's the commercial retail designation. This indicates that today, this is shown as office commercial, pending whatever actions taken today. The lighter, or the grayish purple is business park designation. The purple down here is industrial, and then these yellow shaded areas is residential. The blue reflects public or quasi-public, South High, churches, schools have a public,
If there are none at the moment, I will open it up for any public comment if there
Standby, Questa 2601, South Ohio. I want to thank the commission for looking at this request for rezoning, and I'd like to thank the city staff for all the time and hard work that was put in to getting this proposal this far. I think that Ohio, in the future, not right away, but once they get the four-lane done and the traffic flow right in, right out, going towards Schilling and Target, will make this an ideal commercial area. We've had some feedback from some of the neighbors, and it was positive. They would like to see something in the area within walking distance or a short drive where they could maybe go and fill up with gas, or get ice cream, or get a pizza, or go to the dry cleaners, any number of things. So the residents around this area have been for this project. With that, I guess I would be open to entertain any questions from the commission.
Any questions to the applicant?
Thank you.
Any further comments? Seeing now, now I'll bring it back to the commission. I want to make a comment on the application. I've been a partisan votes of replatted this land, but in light of some of the negative feedback of the commission caught from rezoning the south side of Schilling commercial, I kind of question whether we should go ahead with this right at this moment, given the fact that we just approved a contract for, to proceed on a new comprehensive plan at our last meeting. And I think that that's a conversation that should take place before this vote. And for that reason, I'm not going to support this at this time.
That's an interesting approach. I thought that the discussion held before the Planning Commission was pretty thorough and looked like staff and the developers and the neighbors had plenty of time to discuss this in the various Planning Commission actions. And I was inclined to go ahead and follow through on the Planning Commission recommendation and proceed at this time.
I'd have to concur with Commissioner Pernie in that because of the fact that the south side of Schilling is zoned the way it is, I think this is an excellent buffer to tie into residential area and with the redevelopment of that Ohio Street, I think it'll be an excellent addition. So with that, Mayor, I would move for approval of ordinance 07-10413 approving the application Z0710 filed by Quell Meadow Estates, seeking a change in zoning from C1 and A1 to PC5 and Plan C2, and approve the preliminary development plan for the 20-acre tract of land located on the west side of Ohio Street north of Schilling Road.
So basically, those items are included in ordinance 07-10413. I'm understanding your motion to approve that ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a second?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance 07-10413, providing for a change in zoning district classification from C1 to A1 and PC5 to PC2, and approval of preliminary development plan for 20-acre tract of land located on the west side of Ohio Street north of Schilling Road. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Aye. That passes four to one. Mayor Joka dissenting. We'll now move on to items of administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 07-10412, amending chapter 38 of the Slant of Code by adding Article 8 pertaining to the operation of worksite utility vehicles on city streets.
This ordinance passed on August 27th, and we've had no additional comments. So I'll entertain a motion on second reading.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance 07-10412 on second reading.
Second. The motion is to adopt ordinance 07-10412, amending chapter 38 of the Slant of Code by adding Article 8 pertaining to the operation of worksite utility vehicles on city streets. Will clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Pernie?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 07-10410, amending chapter 42, Article 1 of the Slant of Code by adding section 42-9, requiring that all platted lots, zoning lots and lease sites have frontage on an approved public and private streets.
I don't believe it was discussed in the first reading, but the 35-foot limit on frontage, aren't there a lot of pre-existing properties that have less than 35 feet? So is, or am I, so is this a new requirement?
That is, that is not a new requirement. It just is pulled out of the definition section to move into this section, and so you don't have to hunt for the definition section to do that. We have a couple lots, areas where, that have 25-foot platted lots. Those are lots of record, so they would not be newly created lots. So a 25-foot lot that's platted would be a lot of record, so that wouldn't be subject to the 35-foot. It would, we also have lots on cul-de-sacs, which are at the street less than 35 feet. But on cul-de-sacs, we measure the lot width, the 35 feet at the building line. And so the 35-foot is primarily, comes into play when somebody has a flag lot or something where they have frontage on the street wide enough for a driveway, and then their lot is tucked in behind. But that is not a new requirement. It's just pulled out of the definition section of lot width and put here so it's more readily seen. The other thing that was asked for was a clarification of what we meant by lease site. And we have attempted to, the top three definitions there currently are in our zoning ordinance. The definition of lease site is not. But basically, a lease site is comparable or analogous to a platted lot or a building lot, except instead of being offered for sale, it is offered for lease, which would include building and ground with the building. And we've attempted to clarify that it does not include a situation where somebody's renting space within a building or a portion of a building. It's when somebody is offering a site as a development site, but leasing it instead of selling it. And so that was our attempt to clarify that.
And there's language added into the, into that.
What we would propose to do is, the options there are, if you'd prefer to have that formally adopted in place, then you could defer the second reading. If you want to direct us to take that and formally include it as a adopted definition in the zoning ordinance, we can follow up and do that. Or if you think it still needs to be clarified, we can certainly do that.
Any opinions on how to proceed?
I'm comfortable with what's here.
Again, on the enforcement or the, this actually comes into play when someone applies for a building permit, then?
Most usually, or a change of occupancy. We've had quite a few here lately where people might own an existing piece of property, and they want to lease it to a church or some use like that. This is in there to say that if you're going to lease a piece of property for someone to ensure that it does have, what you're leasing to them does have frontage and guaranteed access to a street, and that you don't lease somebody a landlocked parcel any more than you would sell them one.
So a building permit for a street would possibly come into play on an existing property that was now being subdivided in effect by a lease?
Correct.
Okay.
So that you cannot sell somebody a parcel of ground that is landlocked, but this would just make sure that you cannot lease one as well.
Okay.
If there's no further comment, I'd entertain a motion. Mayor, I'd move we approve ordinance number 07-10410 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to adopt ordinance 104, I'm sorry, 07-10410, amending chapter 42, Article 1 of the Slant of Code by adding section 42-9, requiring that all platted lots, zoning lots and lease sites have frontage on an approved public or private street. Will clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Pernie?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Joka? Item 8.3, first reading ordinance number 07-10414, amending chapter 8, Article 1, Division 5 of the Slant of Code by adding section 8-155, providing for a local amendment to Article 600.5 of the National Electric Code.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. This section of the NEC requires that all commercial buildings and each commercial occupancy accessible to pedestrians must be provided with at least one receptacle in an accessible location at each entrance to each tenant's space for sign or outlet lighting system use. The outlets must be supplied by a branch circuit rated at least 20 amps that supplies no other loads. During several recent projects, the building owners that applied for the building permits offered feedback that they felt that the requirement was too restrictive since they did not intend to install a sign or outlet lighting system at this time. Although they agreed to go ahead and install the circuit as the code, the Electric Code requires, we did take note of that fact of those several occasions when the owner felt like that was an unreasonable requirement, and we took their concerns to the Building Advisory Board for their review. Although the board agreed that the intent of the provision was understandable, it was concluded that it was still reasonable to recommend a slight revision to the language to eliminate the mandatory requirement in the installation of the receptacle unless a sign was definitely going to be provided. We've provided the language that was, the draft language that was approved by the Building Advisory Board- Advisory Board to recommend to the City Commission for amendment to this section of the code. We believe this is a positive step in tailoring our local codes to respond to the needs of our local developers while still maintaining acceptable standards for the safety in our community, and we believe this complies with the strategic plan goal number three, that we will provide the highest quality of services consistent with the governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. We would recommend the commission approve this ordinance, amending NEC Article 600.5A. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, Mr. Roberts? If that makes sense to you. Thank you very much. I'd invite any public comment if there is any. Commission action?
One less mandatory electrical outlet that looks fine to me, so I'd move that ordinance number 07-10,414 be adopted on first reading.
Second.
The motion is to approve ordinance 07-10414, amending the applicable section of Slinna Code by adding Section 8-155, providing for a local amendment to Article 600.5 of the National Electric Code. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Passes five to zero.
Item 8.4, first reading ordinance number 07-10,415, amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 1 of the Slinna Code by adding Section 8-12.4.1, providing for a local amendment to Section 412.2.3 of the International Building Code pertaining to floor surfaces and aircraft hangars.
Mr. Roberts again?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is almost deja vu. Earlier this year, the commission agreed to amend provisions of the 2003 International Building Code, similar provisions related to floor requirements and motor vehicle-related uses. The requirements specified that the floors in motor vehicle parking or storage areas must be sloped to a drain or to the main vehicle entry point rather than being level. This requirement in its practical applications has a significant impact in the cost of construction for buildings used for this purpose. After careful review by the Building Advisory Board, including consultation with the Slinna Fire Department, the board determined that the cost benefit of the safety provided by enforcing the requirement did not justify the increased cost of implementation and recommended that the section be amended. Similar provisions exist in the IBC Section 412.2.3 regarding airport hangars. The Slinna Airport Authority, through their design professional representative, asked that the Building Advisory Board recommend amending these requirements to be consistent with the previously approved wording of the Motor Vehicle Related Occupancies Amendment. The board reviewed the request and voted to recommend an amendment to Section 412.2.3 to provide language consistent with the previous amendment already approved by the commission. We've provided you with a draft language that the Building Advisory Board approved. We believe, once again, that these changes are a positive step in tailoring our local codes to respond to the needs of our local developers while still maintaining acceptable standards for the safety of our community and in conformance with the stated strategic plan goal number three. Be happy to answer any questions you have about this recommendation from the Building Advisory Board at this time.
Questions, Mr. Roberts? I'd invite any public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance number 07-10415, amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 1 of the Slinna Code by adding Section 8, 12.4.1.
Second. The motion is to approve ordinance 07-10415, amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 1 of the Slinna Code by adding a section providing for a local amendment to the applicable section of the International Building Code pertaining to floor surfaces and aircraft hangars. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.5, sanitary sewer improvements on Glen Avenue, Project Number 076432. Sub item 8.5A, Resolution Number 076432, setting forth the findings and advisability of unauthorized sanitary sewer improvements. Sub item 8.5B, acceptance of the offered utility easements.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The attached petition number 4300 was submitted by the residents in the 1700 block of Glen Avenue who were requesting public sanitary sewer improvements for five residential This is Lot Number 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4, and Lot 5. This develops our benefit district. The property on the corner is currently served by the Public Sanitary Sewer in Channel Road. The existing private sewer system that serves this area is this red dashed line. It's kind of a combination that seems to cut across the properties in several directions, and virtually, they've had several issues with this line, and the costs have been very expensive. We've been working with these property owners for practically two or three years and trying to get a majority of the owners on board for this project, and in December and January, three of the property owners signed the petition, and basically, that is the requirements to meet the Kansas statutes for sufficiency, so we've moved forward with this project. The project will be designed by city staff. If approved, it's anticipated we'll have the project completed by the end of the year. Currently, there was no public easements for this particular project. There was a public 14-foot utility easement along, on the north side of these properties in the Millview addition, but there was no public sanitary sewer in that area. The sewer for the Millview addition is out in this road here. So virtually, we're trying to sneak the new public sewer system in with a gas line and a power pole, and you notice there's somewhat of an adjustment in our alignment. About a week and a half ago, we met with the property owners. This time, we had four property owners at our meeting, and it was very informative. We determined this private sewer line that crosses this property, there was an agreement that was developed about 12 years ago that allowed that sewer line to cut across there. It was not recorded maybe as well as it could be to follow the property, and we spoke with the Ericksons who own this property and the Terries of this property, and they're developing an agreement to allow this line to remain in place. These two public, or private sewer lines are 10, 12 years old and in good shape, and our last meeting, it was determined that we could shorten this piece of the line up, which will save some costs to these homeowners. The petition is based on the original design, and that was by suggestion of our bond counsel that we moved forward in with that approach. Virtually, the final assessment is based on the actual costs of the project, and currently, we have signed easements from these property owners, the Webbs, the Phalins, and the Ericksons for our sewer line, and not an easement from the Terries because this portion of the line will not connect. I just wanted to make sure you understood why there was only three easements as opposed to four that's indicated on this map. The five property owners within this benefit district shall be assessed 100% of the costs. Each residential unit or each property owner will be assessed 1/5 of the $66,648, or roughly $13,330, and that was based on the original petition. With the new design that was developed with the property owners about a week and a half ago, we hope to reduce that to roughly $50,000 or $10,000 per property owner based on shortening up this portion of the line. And again, the petition was signed based on this design and these dollars. The property owners may choose to pay their portion of the project as a lump sum payment in the spring of 2008, or to finance their portion over 15 years of special assessments. At this time, staff recommends that the City Commission approve Resolution Number 076432 of advisability and authorization, Project Number 072659, establishing the Special Assessment Improvement District, and authorize staff to complete the design improvements and set a bid date. As a companion item, also accept the offered utility easement dedications from the three property owners on the north side of Glen Avenue. This time, I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of Ms. Tasker? Point of order, do we need two motions on this particular item?
I wouldn't think so, Mayor. I think, given the nature of the item, that they can be consolidated.
Okay. I would invite any public comment if there is any. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I would move we approve Resolution Number 07-6432 of advisability and authorization, Project Number 072659, establishing the Special Assessment Improvement District and authorize staff to design the improvements and set a bid date for the project, as well as accepting the offered utility easement dedications for the lots along the north side of Glen Avenue.
Second. Okay, the motion is to authorize Resolution 07-6432, setting forth the findings of advisability and authorizing sanitary sewer improvements, asking staff to develop plans and set a bid date for such improvements, and then to accept the offered utility easements on Glen Avenue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero. I know we have an executive session on a personnel matter.
Mayor, I'd move the City Commission recessed into executive session for 15 minutes in order to discuss a personnel matter involving non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate privacy rights of the non-elected city personnel involved, and reconvene in this room at 5:18.
Second. Motion is to go into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss a personnel matter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We will go into executive session.
Any action? Any action?